All right. Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School. Are we on? Are we on? Welcome to the Mount Vernon City School District Special Board Meeting, March 30th. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee Saunders.
Present.
Trustee White. Trustee McAllen. Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Turnquest. Trustee Redd. Trustee Sorensen.
Present.
Gorman is present.
Okay, so the presentation is for... Tonight's presentation is for the proposed budget for the 2022-23 school year. And that's going to be presented by Ken Silver.
Mr. Silver, which version are we sharing with the board this evening? Are we starting with the first version?
Yes, sir. Well, first, we're doing a good evening, everyone. I'm trying to answer Dr. Hamilton's question. We are starting with the presentation, and then, to the extent we need to, we will go to the detail of the budget, but we will begin with the hard copy that was given to the board, and which the public has the abbreviated version of. And then, should there be questions having to do with other ways of presenting the budget, those are in tabs two and three, which we will do as needed. Okay? Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for being with us for our budget presentation, for the 2223 budget. We're going to go through this short presentation, and then we will take questions, and then we will see where we go from there in this presentation. So this is the team that was involved in the budget presentation. I have to say that although Amy Moselli is not here tonight, she was instrumental in putting this presentation together, and so I'm very grateful for her help. We have... Part of our investment plan is our vision and our mission. Our vision and our mission really doesn't change. Our mission is to create a sense of urgency, partnership with members of the community, and a journey to restore, rebuild, and rebrand the district so its stakeholders are partners in providing all students with an exceptional educational experience. What do I need to do? All right. And you can see that our mission, our vision, and our values are linked together. Our vision, the Mount Vernon City School District will be recognized as a high-quality educational system, where all students receive a rigorous education, prepare to be college and career-ready, and develop the necessary skills to compete in the global society. Have I got that little... Okay. So we're going to have a very short little video, but this is our budget, our philosophy and overview of the budget. Our budget, our investment plan is constructed to support the district's mission and vision. The following presentation will be the tentative budget. It's based on creating a link between academic excellence and fiscal planning. It captures assumptions about funds captured from the current fiscal year. The 2223 budget presents a fiscal plan that addresses the unique, challenging, and changing situation of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic's impact on staff and the sustainability of student progress. And we're going to look at a short video.
Did you see that bus go by? Oh, there goes another one. While these buses, like schools, are funded by a school district's budget, school budget is just a quick way to say what it costs to educate students. On average, 77% of New York's school budgets are used to cover the salaries and benefits of the people who make education possible, like teachers, school aides, counselors... Did you see that bus go by? Oh, there goes another one. While these buses, like schools, are funded by a school district's budget, school budget is just a quick way to say what it costs to educate students. On average, 77% of New York's school budgets are used to cover the salaries and benefits of the people who make education possible, like teachers, school aides, counselors, nurses, cleaners, mechanics, secretaries, administrators, coaches, and bus drivers. The budget also pays for the desk a student sits at, the book she reads, the classroom she learns in, the field she plays on, the device she uses for research, the test tube she studies, the music she reads, and the field that gets her bus home at the end of the day. So what else is in there? Well, there's also funding to meet special state and federal rules known as mandates, where mandates about transporting students, maintaining school facilities, training staff, establishing safety practices, providing accessible classrooms, meeting learning standards, and much more. Schools must also prepare students to compete for tomorrow's jobs with more innovative technology, real-world projects, and individualized attention. Now, that's a lot on the expenses side, and by law, school budgets must be balanced. Expenses anticipated for the year ahead, the money going out, must be matched by anticipated revenue, the money coming in. Most money for New York schools comes from two key sources, state funds and local property taxes. Federal aid, often in the form of grants, accounts for less than 5% of school funding. State aid is negotiated annually by the governor and the legislature. And state funds have provided about 40% to 45% of school revenue over the last 10 years. That leaves half of the pie to be filled by local property taxes. This tax levy slice is how communities fund their local schools. It's an investment that pays off with an educated workforce, more vibrant local communities, and a stronger economy. It's also a careful investment that considers the skills students need to succeed in future jobs, the cost of school programs and services, the state aid coming to public schools, and how much support local taxpayers can afford. School board members and school leaders consider all of this as they work throughout the year to manage school district finances and plan for the future. Ultimately, voters have the final say on school budgets when they head to the polls in May. To learn more before you cast your vote, check your local school district website or stop by a school board meeting. After all, the school budget directly affects your community, and gathering your input is an important part of the process.
That's the next one? Okay. Our Budget Committee has met numerous times during the past year. People on the committee, trustee Munoz Patterson is the chair of the committee, Wanda White trustee is on the committee, and Richard Powers, community member, Tom Keller, myself, and Amy Moselli. So the Budget Committee tracks the spending to ensure that it's aligned with district goals. We track revenue, including state aid, and we share ideas with the Board of Education and the Business Office. The Budget Committee is committed to a long-range analysis and overview of the budget process, expenditures, revenue, to ensure that the district's goals are supported in the budget. Furthermore, the Budget Committee works to recommend financial considerations that may help accelerate achieving district goals. The three-part budget that you have in front of you was a product of the Budget Committee, and we will talk about that later. In our budget planning, we strategically used our reserves to support past 0% tax increases. We used restricted reserves, meaning what was left over from last year, and our restricted reserves are low and need to be replenished. We also used unrestricted reserves, which were substantially higher last year than the year before. You may recall that the year before, the state withheld some of our state aid, and our tax situation with the city caused us to have a negative fund balance at the end. Last year, we had $9.3 million, and we anticipate that being considerably higher in the coming year.
Sorry. Do you want to bring for the public what restrictive reserves are?
Sure. I was going to come to that later, but...
Oh, I'm so sorry. My apologies. My apologies.
No, I'll just say it briefly. Restricted reserves are reserves that are earmarked for specific purposes, such as employee retirement, to help with debt service, to help with other expenses that we have, such as certiorari's, which are tax refunds to public members. Those restricted reserves, if they're not replenished and they're used each year, eventually are gone. We will come to that later on. Unrestricted means that the board can allocate the unrestricted reserve as they wish towards the next budget. Again, we had $9.3 million at the end of June. We will show you that we're using a portion of that for the coming year's budget. We also carefully tracked our spending and revenue. We tracked state aid. We looked to ensure non-essential expenditures were monitored. We looked for additional sources of revenue, such as grants, and we know that this year, through the efforts of the Office of School Improvement and Dr. Bennett Conroy, our grant situation is far improved from the past, and we are using some of those funds to supplement, not supplant, but supplement our educational programs. Also, this is our second year collecting school taxes. We drew the line two years ago and said we were no longer going to let the city collect our taxes and not give us all of those revenues. So now, we collect our own school taxes through our own staff members, and it is going very, very well in our second year. And we're, in fact, preparing for our third year, starting in July. So collecting our own taxes has helped us to mitigate the shortfall in tax revenues. Also, you should know that since Dr. Hamilton and this administration got here, we have never borrowed for tax purposes. We have always managed, even with the shortfall from the city. This is some of the reserves that we have, that trustee was just asking about. So one of those is workers' compensation reserves, unemployment insurance, retirement contribution, employee benefits, a reserve for debt service to pay off some of our bonds. So the column on the left is what there was at June 30th. The column in the middle is what we plan to use for the coming year, including the $5.5 million in undersigned fund balance at the end, and the column on the right is what will be remaining. So if we look at the very bottom right, we can see that we expect to equal or exceed the maximum fund balance of 4% that we're allowed to have, even with the money that's being contributed to the 2223 budget. One of the goals and directives to me, to the administration, was that we want the fund balance to be at the most it could possibly be. Two years ago, it was negative. This coming year, we anticipate having the maximum of about $10,500,000 in our fund balance. These are some of the capital projects that we are planning for the 2223 budget. In years past, we have had very little or no capital projects in the budget. This year, Dr. Hamilton reviewed what was requested by the various schools, and we came up with this plan for the various schools. This is only what's in the budget. This is not what's needed. It's just a small amount of what we need. It comes to $2.2 million, and it is in the budget exactly the way you're seeing it there. And we can talk about that later when we talk about various projects. And so you could see things like Reeking Mount Vernon High School. The only thing that's actually underway right now is the Williams Elevator. That's a handicap elevator that must be repaired. The board declared that an emergency, and we are repairing that now, so there'll be a little bit of that number will not be used in next year's budget.
I'm sorry, Mr. Silver...
Yes, sir.
No, I was just saying, Mr. Silver, I don't mean to, you know, be opinionated with this, but for all of us that do not speak budget, are not in the money field, a lot of the public will not understand, like, what capital projects are.
Sure.
So if you don't mind, like, if you could speak your lingo, but explain, like, you know...
Sure. So there's two ways we can do repairs and renovations. One is just through the repair budget, but if we designate it specifically in the budget as a capital project, we then have the ability to get state aid. Most state aid on all of these items would be repaid over 15 years. New construction is paid over 20 years. So the aid that we get, perhaps 68%, 70% on these projects, would come back year by year over 15 years for what we spend here. So a capital project means something that architects are involved in. It has to be submitted to the state, approved by the state education department, and then we would do that project and submit the reports to the state, and we would then be eligible for state aid. In the business office, the board passed the DEI policy. We took many of our contracts and went out to bid again with them, and we are now in a situation with our new contractors where every contractor, before they get paid, has to provide a payroll for each pay period. And that payroll allows us to identify that they, in fact, are meeting the DEI policy of the school district before they get paid. Every one of our contractors now fits that. Another part we have is the efficiency in the business office to streamline attendance. We are now putting in time pieces in addition to the Envision program, and this now allows people to enter attendance. We're going to be eliminating time sheets and therefore making everything much more efficient and accurate. When people log in, when somebody's absent, they have to go into the system and show what's there. If they don't do what they're supposed to do, we know it. The budget at a glance, the superintendent's proposed budget includes major increases for capital projects, for operating the 16 schools, and this $3.4 million increase includes $1.7 million for the new charter school that we're anticipating to open, which is allowed to have 112 kids in their first year of operation. So we have allowed for that in our budget. What's not... Oh, yes, it is. Our insurance, we're expecting to go up some 12%. Special education is going up, psychological services, social work, those areas are going up in part because we are trying to make up for the pandemic time when the kids lost so many of the services that they needed and fell behind, and we believe that these expenditures, this plan, will help to bring these kids back to where they are. We included some substantial extra money for natural gas because of, we just don't know where gas is going to be. The state contract doesn't come out till August, and that would be too late for us to make a change, so we had to allow, because of the world situation, for an increase in natural gas. We had a retirement incentive, which is now completely paid off, and now we are taking that out, and we have the benefit of a number of people who are at the highest level have retired and been replaced with lower-paid people, and we also have the benefit of the expenses of the retirement incentive, $652,000 is gone. Our debt service decreases every year as we pay off the existing bonds that we have. So we are now well below the maximum that we're allowed to have in our bonding. Here's a revenue breakdown. We know that property taxes are just over 50% of the budget, and state aid is 43%. And then, we have a small amount for our fund balance and other revenues we have. So we expect our state aid to be about $114 million next year. It's up about $2.5, $2.6 million in one part of it. That's the foundation aid. That's the aid you get for operating the school district. But there's other aids that will be increasing next year. Our transportation aid will be increasing because our transportation costs are going up this year. State aid for expense-based objects takes place the next year. So if we have increased services for classified children, our state aid to help pay for that goes up next year. If we increase our costs for construction and renovation, our state aid to pay back for that increases next year. So transportation was my first example. That went up this year, so the state aid will go up next year. So those things combined bring us about $3 to $3.5 million more for next year. Our budget for next year is $266 million. That is, at this point, using some fund balance, and then the state aid additional, and being very careful with how we spend our money. These are two of the grants that the Office of School Improvement was able to secure and help us with. The total amount of the two grants is in the first column on the left. That's $29 million. The names of them are above. We used $460,000 in one, $170,000 in another. One of them, the CRRSA, is going to be used up after next year. We're planning on spending $8.7 million there next year, $10 million in the American Rescue Plan Grant, and that will leave us $9.9 million in the next year for the '23-'24 school year. So you could see how that's used. It was used to supplement programs, provide new things for our children that we were unable to provide for. We just have to be very careful in all of these. We're warned about going off a cliff, meaning using these funds for things that will be gone. So if we use it to have teachers, how do we pay for the teachers when the grants are gone? So it has to be used for things that are sustainable or one-time expenses. The three-part budget, which the board has, shows administration, capital, and program. And in fact, the administration portion of the proposed budget is the lowest it's been since this administration has gotten here. We're showing it as 9% on the left, but that was all rounded off. It's really just under 9%, and is an improvement, which it means that the educational portion of it, what goes to the kids, is increased, and the administration essentially stayed the same, which makes it a lower part of the entire budget. The three-part budget that the board has in front of them shows the comparison of three years of the three-part budget, so you can see all the pieces of that. Budget highlights. We intend to maintain excellence, teachers and staff. We've addressed the COVID slide, which I talked about a little bit earlier, with our additional psychological services to provide for the kids who have slid a little bit. We are rewriting and remapping our curriculum. We are increasing ways to get more CTE certifications, meaning career and technical education. We are continuing our dual-language program that we have already started a few years ago. We, when this administration got here, we didn't have music or art in most of the elementary schools. Now, every school is enjoying improvements in those areas. We also have additional STEAM incentives in math and science, and we continue to expand and provide the IB offerings for a greater number of students for next year. We also continue to provide alternative pathways to college and career readiness, such as the new culinary program, I never pronounce that right, where we have some 180 kids enrolled in that program, and we received a grant from Senator Biaggi for $1 million to improve that kitchen, to renovate that kitchen for the kids. We have barbering, cosmetology, auto shop, and more, and we expect to have more to come in the years ahead. We continue to support early childhood investment programs, such as our pre-K programs, to ensure our students are ready for kindergarten. That has made a dramatic difference in the kids' readiness for kindergarten. We continue to invest in technology, new student information, software to meet the needs of students, and internet safety, with a focus on reading and writing through balanced literacy. Would, Dr. Gorman, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, I'll be up. So in addition, other budget highlights include the maintenance of our additional staff that this administration started out with, including nurses, counselors, and clinicians. There's actually an increase to address the social-emotional learning needs of students that are coming from federal as well. We continue to provide professional learning opportunities for our teachers and our parents to improve our academic programs. We've talked about our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention Services, as a way to provide positive behavior incentives. I know Dr. Hamilton's going to release the Superintendents' Action Plan soon, and there are attendance incentives that a lot of the schools are now using with their kids to help them get to school and improve attendance issues, restorative practices. We want to make sure we are teaching our kids how to handle conflict appropriately. We have our community parent liaisons, and we've talked extensively about the emergence of a community school in our district, a BTMS, and continuing, again, to invest in the social-emotional learning needs of our kids.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I'm sorry. When we're talking about the social and mental support that we're supporting our kids, to support our kids, by any chance, is there a section in the budget to do the same for our teachers?
Yeah, we are providing social-emotional learning, professional development for our teachers. A couple of years ago, I know you remember, during the pandemic, we did a real whole series for our teachers, and there are resources, through human resources as well, to help teachers in need. We were just talking about that today, that the clinicians, I was talking to Dr. Smith, that the new clinicians will help not only students but staff in need as well.
Thank you.
These are some of the mandates that we have to deal with and what the impact of those are. We are anticipating spending $9.1 million for charter schools, and we had that discussion previously. Our health insurance is only going up 1.5% for next year. However, it's still $31 million for next year. Other employee benefits are about $20 million, and we have to set aside a portion of our state aid, a foundation aid for community schools. That's $62 million, and that's non-negotiable. We must do that. So this is what this looks like with no tax increase. During the past eight years since this administration got here, we have only had a tax increase of 0.89% a few years ago and 0.5% last year, nothing else, whereas the budget has continued to move up from $227 million to $266 million with almost no tax increases through this period of time. So that's what this looks like with no tax increase. The budget will be $266 million, or the board will be asked to approve that. And again, we've used these restricted reserves to balance the budget, and at some point, we are going to, with leftover money, we're going to ask the board to appropriate leftover monies to build up these reserves once we reach our fund balance goals. So we want to build up what there is for unemployment, for workers' compensation, for debt service. Those things need to be improved, and we need to provide more money for certiorari payments with leftover money. Also, I want to say one more thing about that. We've spoken about this before, that when you don't have a tax increase, it affects the amount that you can then raise taxes in the future. So not having tax increases through all these years has reduced what we can increase our taxes. We're at about 1.3% is the maximum we could increase if we wanted to. Many other school districts that increase their taxes every year have a 2%, which is the state tax cap. We are below that. Okay. Questions and answers?
Who's going to start?
And then, we need to know how we're going to proceed. Trustee Patterson?
So are you asking us to, are you saying you want to increase the budget? You want to increase the budget, and you want to increase, you want a tax increase?
This version, what we've just shown you, contemplates no tax increase for next year. That's what you've seen so far today in this slide with no tax increase.
Hi. I have, I'd like to really quickly, so the Budget Committee met. We reviewed the budget extensively. I want to thank Vice President Mitchell for joining us, because I think it was really important to have more folks in the room. And there's a few things that I want to really quickly address, and I might roll back over some of the things you mentioned in your presentation really quickly, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. So the first thing is, if you're looking at what our responsibility is as a board, our responsibility is we are financial fiduciaries of the district, and that means that we have the utmost responsibility to ensure that the funds are used appropriately, to ensure that we're doing everything correctly. So we take this extraordinarily seriously. Additionally, I pay taxes, too, just like everybody else sitting up here. I don't want to pay any more than we have to. It's not ideal. So with all that in mind, let's really quickly go back to some of the greatest hits, because this is, again, what everybody likes to have the conversation, everyone talks about, well, if you didn't raise taxes... if you didn't raise taxes last year, why did I pay more in taxes? So I think it's really important to revisit these things every year because people, you know, you live your lives and you don't sit there with the school board budget all year like I do. So when you're talking about the tax levy, and if you're looking, as a matter of fact, this exact slide is perfect for this. If you look at the tax levy, it has 135, 135, 947, right? $135 million. Now, let's start with the really simple. If we didn't raise taxes last year, why did you end up paying more in taxes last year? The answer is really simple. So, well, it's not simple. Let me take that back. Nothing about this is simple. Let's start with that. But, all convoluted, but taxes are related to the assessments of the properties. Assessments are controlled entirely by the city and by the Comptroller's Office. We have no control over what the assessment is of a certain property, and as properties begin to file lawsuits and say that, you know what, my property is overvalued, those properties, and if you think of it like a pizza pie, those properties, as the judge agrees, or as the settlement goes, those properties pay less of the pie, which means the rest of us pay more of the pie. So even though the $135 million is not increasing, it's just your portion of the $135 million is increasing. Isn't enrollment declining, so why isn't it getting cheaper to educate students? So the reason it doesn't get cheaper is because there's not one way to eliminate cost. There is not a whole sixth-grade class that leaves Mandela, and suddenly we can say, okay, there's one teacher that's gone, so we can now reallocate those funds. We lose a student in Mandela, we lose two students in Pennington, we lose a student in Williams. So it's not, there's really no way, and that's effectively what that $9.1 million that's going to charter schools is doing. It's literally a waste of funds for the district. We are just giving it away. So effectively, every year, we are expected to educate the kids at the same level, if not a higher level. We're expected to bring the buildings up to a level of, you know, a standard, yet we're doing it with effectively less and less money every year, every year that we don't raise taxes, every year that we're limited to this amount. Okay, so that was my greatest hits. Now, the, when we're looking at the cost per pupil, because that's the next thing that everybody, I always constantly hear, that we pay the same amount as Scarsdale. Because the fact of the matter is this, we are going to end up, at some point, we're kicking this can down the road. I mentioned it two weeks, I think, last meeting or the meeting before, that there will be a point where we're going to have to raise taxes. And the whole goal last year that the Budget Committee came up with was we were saying, listen, we want to ensure that we don't have one single shot at this to say, oh my gosh, hey, City of Mount Vernon, suddenly we're in the hole and we need the whole 2%. Well, we can't even take the whole 2%, right? We'd have to do 1.3%. Because that's not the way to do it. That's not the responsible way for homeowners to budget. It's not the responsible way for us to budget. It's just not responsible. And if you look at the districts that are similar to ours, and I'll take two, for example, White Plains and Nourishell, both districts have increased their taxes over the same period of time that we increased our taxes 1.3%. They increased their taxes 7.5, or I'm sorry, it's probably 8 now, over 8% and over 13%. So White Plains has been over 13% in the same timeframe that we took 1.5%. It's just not sustainable. So that's why we had discussed last year, hey, listen, we're talking about taking these small increases, so that way we start to build up a tolerance, and we don't have this where we run into an issue of saying, oh my God, we have no money. Because it's not, everybody knows you have savings for a rainy day. We don't have savings because we don't make enough money. And that's what effectively we're doing if we continue to not raise taxes. Now, there is an alternative that we were discussing in the Budget Committee, and I wanted to bring it to the board's attention. So again, when you look at cost per pupil, many of our, let's say, our district, right, we spend effectively the same amount of money per pupil as Scarsdale does. And everyone says, well, how come Scarsdale gets X amount of results and we get Y amount of results? And what's interesting is if you actually look at the expenses, if you break it down by teachers' expenses, educational expenses, administrative expenses, sports and, you know, programs, that is actually a lot less than what Scarsdale pays. And I want to really draw everyone's attention to the one thing that we pay an exorbitant amount of money on are buildings, buildings and grounds. It's our plants. Why? Our buildings are old as anything. They are hard to keep up, they're, you have all the issues of having 100-year-old buildings. So one of the ideas that we were trying, because we were trying to, we've used 0% as our goal every year, to see how closely we can get to not change anything. And one of the ideas that came up in the Budget Committee is we'd like to see what everyone thinks about closing this building and moving the administration into Mount Vernon High School. What that would effectively do, a building that used to hold 3,000 students is only holding 1,200 now. We have the space there. We'd be able to either reutilize this, or I don't know, sell it. I hear developers are looking into Mount Vernon, so that would be nice. And we could, we could say, I have to make a joke somehow. So, but we could say, listen, so now suddenly we have one less anchor, one less drain. And effectively what that would do, as President Saunders has said, is that would bring now, we discussed, I think last week you had voiced that you feel the high school is not getting enough attention. It's hard to ignore people when they're in your face. It's hard to ignore people when you're walking through the hallway every day. That would increase the amount of adults in the building, that would increase the amount of overall, whatever, anything in the building. And the thought would be that if we could do that, I think that we can get away with another year of 0%. There would be a cost, obviously, to renovating the building to fit office space. We'd have to get an architect to look at it to see if that is feasible, but there's really effectively no other way. Like, Mount Vernon is not blessed with some of the issues that upstate schools have, right? Upstate districts have, like, forest land next to their school. So what do they do? They knock down a few trees, they build a new building, they knock down their old one, suddenly everything's fine. They have a new, updated facility. We don't have that here. Where are we gonna, we have no place to build. So just something to think about. And then last year, we were in a fantastic, and again, the reason that we're so well off this year, I want to draw attention to the fact that the board voted to have a $7.5 million freeze, which ended up being the saving grace that we had last year, along with all the COVID cuts and everything like that. So we really kind of were in like a perfect storm last year, and we're really in a perfect storm this year. But we really need to be deliberate and cautious with whatever steps we take going forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Because I had some.
I have questions.
Gorman, you have any questions?
How do you want to handle the?
Go about it.
Go about what?
I think it makes sense, well, Mr. Silver has the budget up too. You have the budget up, right? We can go through everybody's questions.
Around if anybody else had any questions. Okay, Trustee Miller?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Trustee Patterson, for your thoughts on this. I have a few questions. Specifically, two things. First, on the capital budget that you've, that we're, you know, the improvements we are including in the budget that you listed before. My question is, on the replacing of the carpet in Rebecca Turner, didn't we, in the auditorium, didn't we redo that entire auditorium during the 2020 bond?
No, that auditorium has not been touched.
So that was, that one was the only one?
That's the original carpet that's been there for many years.
Okay, that one wasn't done. And then on the Graham entrance, didn't we redo the Graham entrance?
Yes, we did. There are some upgrades that need to be done.
Okay.
Just some repairs.
Repairs to the new work that was done?
Yes, just repairs.
Why do we still have the senior architect position in the budget when the senior architect is leaving?
Well, there's been no discussion on the board about how we want to manage that with regard to the facilities department and how we want to manage that, or we've talked about possibly increasing the staff in the facilities department in terms of management.
So that could move, that could move into the?
That money can be moved, yes.
That could move into there. Okay. Why are sports and extracurricular activities, why is that budget line going down 23%?
So the coach and I have met, and we are getting essentially all of what he needs for next year, this year, from existing monies in his department that have not been used. And so his needs are substantially lower for next year in the department. We're taking care of things he needs for next year, this year, with existing money in the interscholastic budget. And we've also moved some of the transportation to other areas.
Sports transportation?
Yes. So coach and I have gone everything, and he's perfectly satisfied with our plan for next year for his department.
And does this include, so we are, are we, well, I don't even know if we're growing our sports for the?
This includes, this includes middle school sports.
Okay, great. Question, okay.
In regards to that, so that includes all sports? Because when you say coach, I hear like only one percent.
There are stipends, there are stipends for the coaches. I'm talking about the athletic director, Coach Sumino.
Okay, okay, no, thank you, thank you.
Abuse his budget.
Okay, so the athletic director, okay, good, thank you, I'm sorry. I just need a clarification on that.
I have a question about the, under human resources, we have an extreme recruiting problem here in the district. Many districts do, obviously, but ours, I think, is rather extreme. And I noticed that the budget has not increased dramatically, and I want to know if, you know, in terms of budget defense rounds, was there no recommendation to increase our, to beef up our human resources department?
We feel that the funds in there are sufficient for increased, increasing our efforts to.
Okay, I don't, okay.
To recruit.
Just for the record, I don't agree with that. Secondly, on security, I've had some phone calls from parents from various high schools, and there's been concerns about the security. And I know we had a discussion about evaluating security in all our buildings at some point, but I think I'm concerned about the level of budget. I don't see it going up dramatically. So either the, and this is just for, this isn't a criticism of the budget per se, I'm just saying that I personally feel that the board needs to look at our security expenditures and what are we getting for what we're paying? We're paying 3/4 of a million dollars for security at the high school. You know, what are we getting for that? What do we need? Same thing with STEAM. The STEAM high school, I don't see the numbers going up for security there, and yet, and yet, the principal has said to me on numerous occasions, they don't have enough security in that building. So I have some great concerns about those lines not, you know, increasing. And I know this is direction that you would need to get from the board, but I'm just raising it now for the board's consideration.
So just so you know, with regard to the STEAM Academy, we have added security at the front entrance in the morning to prevent people from parking where they shouldn't be parking.
I'm aware of that.
And that has worked well.
There's a lot of other problems.
And we also have an initiative that we will be discussing shortly at Mount Vernon High School to dramatically increase security at that campus.
I look forward to hearing about that. We've been talking about that for at least five or six years. And that's, once again, no criticism, it's just something I really want to focus on. And then the last question I had is on the rescue plan dollars. So we encumbered a certain amount this year, I think it was 8 million, or no, 408 million, was it 8 million this year? I don't know, you said that we encumbered, but has the Budget Committee or is the board going to see how we are spending this money?
Well, that, the ARP, the ARP funds are allocated with permission from the state to spend in certain areas.
Right.
Dr. B.C., do you want to?
Well, I'm aware of that. I just want to know, how did we end up spending them?
Right.
Or how have we encumbered them?
Yes. The ARP funds are divided into two categories, one for 9 million and one for 21 million. And the source of funds, which will be audited soon, what we do, as you can understand, we have a committee that we put together, and we decided how the funds are going to be spent. Six months after it has been approved, we have to revisit both funding to make sure that we can make any changes, get the public involved, and show them where we're going to make those changes. If you go on the website under OSI, you will see a report there as how the funds are spent. So the entire community, and that is a mandate, we have to do that, can look at it and see. So after six months, by law, we have to revisit those funds and make any changes with a committee. We can't make any changes before that, and whatever it's apportioned for, we have to spend it that way. If you want to make any change, we, as a district, have to go back to that committee and then send it to the federal government for changes. So we will definitely know after six months what we want to change. But it's there on the website, and anybody can see exactly how the money is spent, and it has to be decided by a committee of people from the community and from here. So to answer your questions, yes, what we have there is what we are spending now. And if you see that chart that Mr. Silver showed, was a chart that Marlon did as to how those funds were apportioned. So that's where we are at this point. The 8 million is encumbered.
Right.
And it's over a three-year period.
Right.
So after the three-year period, even though we had the 9 million, it has to be divided into three. So the first year you use this, the second year you use that, and the third year you use that. And all that is on the chart. But again, during that whole period of time, we can go back and make changes. If something doesn't work well, we can always change it. So it's very clear and very specific. And when we have money like this, it's not only this New York State audited, but the federal government has a hand in that, and they're audited. And they have already informed us that they're supposed to come in February, they didn't make it, so I'm looking for them either, and March is almost finished in April, and June is going to be the ARP funds. So we have to keep this clean at all times. But the community has a right to see how we spend it, and that's why we put it on the website, so that everybody can go there and look at it.
But we haven't used all that money. It hasn't been, I mean, we earmarked it for something, but it hasn't been used.
No, the money cannot be used at one point in time. It's over a three-year period. And whatever we don't use for the first year, it can always roll over in the second year and the third year. And if the third year comes and we don't use it, they will always allow us to roll over into the fourth year, because that money is given to us. But we have to go year by year by year. We cannot just use it all at once. They will not approve it.
So on the website, we can see, because the budget shows that we could be spending, was it 20 million next year?
The chart is up there again. So we're spending.
10 million next year, right?
I can't see that.
Yes, from the ARP, yes.
Right, from the ARP. So that, but that should be on the website now, right? If it's going to be budgeted, we know what we're spending it on, or we don't know?
Okay, what we do know is that the years are not there, however, for over the three years. What is there is what we are spending the entire money on. So what we can do, we can go back and add this chart to it that people can see what we spend year one, year two, year three.
Okay, that would be great.
Okay, so that's what we will do. We'll add it. Well, I'll ask Marlon to add it on tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Trustee Saunders, do you have any questions? Oh, no, should I ask you?
Why can't I just ask her that question? Okay, so going back, first of all, I just want to make a comment that, oh, sorry. I speak loudly, so I just want to make a comment. You know, I understand that Mount Vernon High School is having some difficulties. I get it. But whenever we talk about increasing security, we focus on Mount Vernon High School like if it was a jail. And we need more and more and more security. I don't know, I don't even know how to put it. I know that I'm probably miswording this, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but when we talk about increasing security, I wish for us to discuss it as a district, and I understand that Mount Vernon is our focal point right now, because we need, you know, to figure out how can we help our, you know, our kids that are in there and into coping and learning how to deal with disagreements. But can we just, it's just a suggestion, and I'm just pleading, can, when we talk about increasing security, can we talk about increasing security in all buildings? Let's not just mention Mount Vernon High School.
This is for us, for the whole district, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but it's, because we just mentioned Mount Vernon. And I, I, I just, you know, I, I don't want our kids to feel that they are a problem, you know? I just want them to know that. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I just heard it.
No, but, I mean, I think it, I think the comment, again, and it wasn't my comment, so maybe trustee Miller wants to address it, but I think it's fair to say. Huh? No, I think it's just fair to say that how much we do spend.
Money, exactly.
Because the three million, was it three million, yeah, it's three million dollars overall. That's a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and maybe this has to become a conversation à la that we have about, you know, that, that's happening in terms of police, where we're talking about, listen, maybe some of that needs to be reallocated, and maybe we need more mental health professionals in our buildings. Because the kids are struggling, COVID really did a number on all of them, to me. I mean, it's, it's just not, it's not even fair what's happened to the kids.
No, I agree. I agree, so, a question that I have, and, once again, I am not a budget person whatsoever. So, we have so many per diem custodial staff and so many per diem, um, um, security staff. Why is that?
We have a large number of openings in custodial staff and in security staff. When we do not have full-time people to hire or who are staying with us, who leave for one reason or another, we have to fill those positions. The buildings need to be cleaned, watched over, and there needs to be security. And so there's per diems, which means daily workers come in to fill the places where there are openings. Nobody is hired to supplement anything, it's only to replace people who are not there.
So the people that we have as per diem, they don't want a full, full-time job?
Some of those people are applying for jobs, some don't, they have to go through the, the application process and the, what we, the compact we have, and then through HR. And they're hired on a regular basis, as we can find them.
No, once again, like, the people that we have per diem, no, can, have we, anyone reached out to them to see if they want a?
Some, the, the cleaning, the cleaning component does not require anything through civil service. But on anything beyond that, the custodial staff, maintenance grounds, all that requires civil service exams to be passed. And we have to reach these people on the civil service list to hire them. But the cleaning staff does not. But where we have openings, we use per diems.
Okay, so that includes security, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. No, I just suggest for us to reach out to see if the people that we have, like, for example, as for security, since we're talking about security, to see if they would like to have a full-time job.
There is a list of, of, in all those areas, of people who are next and next after that, and so on, to be considered for a full-time position.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is, one thing that I'm seeing here, and I know that it's just like, you know, in comparison to a lot of the monies here, it's just a very minute amount of money. But I am seeing, hold on, sorry. Like, every time that I see, for example, like, uh, an office, like, you know, like, for example, um, and I'm just going to use, use Dr. Gorman, it's not, nothing to it, you know, like, and we have like every office here in the building, every position in the building has a budget for materials. And I was wondering, can we compile, can we just put all that in, in one?
Our, our purchasing is done, either through Bosse's or through state contracts or some other form of procured services and supplies. And whether we buy them in, it doesn't matter what quantity we buy them in when we're under those conditions. And we do generally buy in bulk, and we attribute those purchases to the various departments that require those, those materials.
So basically, it's out of our control how we do that?
It's not out of our control, there are choices, but we have to use procured, either through RFPs or bids or through a state bid, something called BidNet, or through piggybacking on other people or through Bosse's, which provides many of those services to us.
Okay, wonderful. The other question I have, I see here, uh, like Bosse Services, District Wide, um, My Learning Plan Workshop. What is that, I'm sorry, I just need, what is that? Sorry, I'm just, need clarification, what is that?
Those are professional development workshops that Bosse's sponsors that we get aid back on.
Okay, good, thank you. I just need to know, what's the other one? Wait, 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 because I'm not there. Just wanted to. So, I see here that we have a large number of teachers that have been hired for, you know, all the schools as after-school programs. And, and, I don't know, like, is this including, like, the, the, the after-school programs that we are looking for teachers and we don't find? I'm a bit confused here, like, like I said, please, I apologize, my apologies, because I have, this is my first time dealing with the budget, so I need to learn.
Typically, after-school teachers, there's an hourly rate that is assigned to those, to that after-school. And they work on clubs or other activities involving the kids after school. Typically, they are our employees.
No, I, I get it, I get it, but it's like, I also know that, um, we don't have, we're talking about all these after-school programs and we, that, we have, like, the second grade, for example, second grade Pennington, I could use that one because that's my son's. They, that class doesn't guide in after-school because we don't have a teacher. So, and I see, like, I see a whole bunch of after-school here, but.
Well, typically, the building principal would recommend people to be, uh, working in after-school programs. And that would go through HR, through a board resolution to approve those after-school activities.
Okay. So far, and, for example, the athletes program, the gifted and talented, I see that we have an after-school here, for what school is that? Because it doesn't indicate what school, it just says gifted and talented. And I know it's only a thousand dollars, but it doesn't indicate for what school.
I, I think it's probably district-wide. If it doesn't say what school, it should say district-wide, doesn't it say that?
No, it doesn't.
Where are you?
I am in page 18.
What line are you on?
Uh, line 604.
Can I just interject one second? Taylor, put this slide up on your board doc, so you won't have to strain your eye.
Oh, thank you.
Isn't that nice? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, take it away.
So page 18, 604, let me put my glasses, just in case I. Oh, see, because it didn't indicate district-wide. And how many, um, so is this one teacher?
It's just an allocation.
It's just an allocation.
It does, it's not for anything specific or any specific location.
Yes, nothing specific. See, hold on, sorry, I'm sorry, just that I, I read very small and I missed, because I write very small and I constantly miss stuff. Oh, okay, this question is not in the budget, but for, um, is there a line in the budget that, uh, for extracurricular activities that we might start next year, like, you know, for future?
There are sufficient monies in the budget for whatever we would like to start.
Okay, and then the other thing I didn't see, and I know that it was minute, and I know I asked you and you told me that it was really, really small. I didn't see how much money we get from rental, the rental of the pool, it's not here.
We, we, we've really not gotten much, if anything, from the rental of the pool. I mean, that, that still has, that's to be determined by, at the end of the year. We're not anticipating that.
Okay, okay, no, I just, because I, so I didn't see, and I didn't know why. Okay, thank you very much. Hopefully that concludes my questions.
Trustee Miller, I mean, trustee Mitchell?
Here we go again, what is with this?
I don't know, it's, I understand, I am, I am. Warrant.
Okay, okay, no, I don't want any problems with that guy. Okay, so, I have a couple of questions, of course. First, I want to, I just want to ask this question. I think we really have to ask the idea that all of us here think that we need more teachers, better teachers and teachers that want to stay, right? You got to ask yourself the question, how do we remain competitive against neighboring school districts that are taking our good people away because they're paying more money? And those, most of those districts, unless I'm mistaken, are the ones that are, uh, presenting tax increases in a healthy fashion, a normal fashion, or a regular fashion, any of those words. I imagine that, I know for a fact that we have district leads and teachers in our, in this school district who have left and gone to some of the neighboring districts that we mentioned earlier. And it's mainly because of money, and that's all there is to it. I think we need to think about that. And, you know, um, the idea floated, mentioned of closing this building and combining the people here in, in the high school. I think it's an amazing idea, I think it's something we've never thought of, heard of, or, or even thought about. I think it was an incredible breath of fresh air that trustee Patterson mentioned earlier. Especially when you balance that against the idea of one more year of zero percent, a zero tax increase. But I do want to bring back the whole understanding that every year that we do a zero increase in taxes, it just, it reduces our ability to raise taxes for the years that are coming. We're shooting ourselves in the foot long-term. My mom owns the property, she's a senior citizen, she's fixed income, I don't want to see her have to pay more taxes on anything myself. But I know we do understand, we want our district to remain viable, we want it to become more robust than it is. Our mission says everything that it says, it means, we're supposed to be standing behind that as well. We have to think about that when we're making these decisions. I'm going to move on to my questions in the budget. Can we, Mr. Silver, or actually, Dr. B.C., can we speak to the, the dean position? What that title is in this district and what the state, how the state views that position?
I think that's a question for HR, but I try to answer it as best as I can. I don't think we have any more dean position here, I think we got rid of all the deans' position. But the dean position was more or less like a teacher position that strictly deals with discipline. But we don't have any more deans here, those positions are gone.
Okay, so, then that brings me to my next question in the budget, which is page 15, line 496. For Denzel Washington, we show that there is a principal, two APs, one department admin, and one dean.
Yes, that, that, that note just was not updated.
Okay, so that need, that note needs to be updated, okay. So, can we, um, so we need Marcy to talk to why the state, how the state feels about that title, correct? Should we, we should ask that question when she's here?
No, but the state doesn't view it as an administrative position at all, it's just like a teacher position.
Right, so, somebody who's basically a dean, they don't, they're not able to present the credentials they need to open, to lead a building?
No.
Okay, fine, got it. Now, that brings me to the next question, when I just said the word APs, when I say APs, I'm talking assistant principals. Uh, Mr. Silver, why, why on blue earth or green would we not have an assistant principal in every building that we have? Why would we have floating APs? I just want to know, I just want to understand why, why a building would be denied an assistant principal?
I think somebody else should speak to that, I, I would say, I'll ask somebody else to speak to that as well, but this, this is.
It's generally related to student administrator ratio. These two buildings that share APs are buildings that have relatively low enrollment. Uh, so in an effort to reduce administrative costs, we reduce, um, the number of APs in buildings with low enrollment.
So, that's a decision that we make and we stand by that regardless of a request from the principal of that building. Even if they present rationale for why they need a full-time AP, we still can, we still just stand behind that decision, either way?
Well, ultimately, principals, and if having been one, will always request a, an AP. Um, but when you look at the parity across the district in terms of, in terms of what that ratio looks like. Um, if you take a larger building, for instance, let's take Lincoln. Uh, Lincoln is one of our largest elementary schools, it has a principal and an AP, makes sense. Um, if you look at, um, uh, let's say Benjamin Turner, um, where we reduced that, removed that AP, where there's under a hundred, under 200 students in that building, just in terms of parity and equity. Um, that was the barometer that we used. And that was probably about four years ago, three or four years ago, uh, when we were tasked with reducing administrative costs.
Okay, I mean, I just, I'm just going to say that I believe that if we, when we bought all our buildings, K through eight, we presented an incredible strain to every last one of those buildings that had only been an elementary school, K through six. And to not recognize the fact that you're putting junior high school students in that building with children, babies even. And then imagine that you, we wouldn't need a building lead and an assistant in those buildings. Seems like it might have been a miscalculation, I'm just going to say it like that. We have the highest special education volume of students than any district near us. That alone should support the necessity of having an AP in every one of these buildings. I understand what you're saying, I'm just stating it out there that I think it's a, it's a, a good miscalculation that we should have any building that's K through eight not have an assistant principal. I know we have incredible talent in our district that are working and they're certified, that should be able to say and apply to those positions and those positions be open for them to apply to, and that's what I'm going to end it with that. I'm going to move on to the webmaster position with 200,000, can you please explain what that line is for? Dr., Mr. Silver?
I'm going to ask trustee Miller to speak to that, but I'll speak briefly first. So our efforts, board directed us to improve our public relations program. And trustee Miller has chaired a committee on public relations and has come up with a couple of titles of people to be involved in improving how we reach the public. And how we reach the public through print, through advertisements, and through our website. Trustee, you want to speak to it?
Sure, um, I don't know if the 200,000 is exact, but the web, the webmaster, we are hiring, you know, the board approved hiring a full-time person to run our internet, our web services, and that's for all 16 buildings and the district. And that salary is somewhere between 60 and 80,000 dollars a year, commence it with experience, I suppose. And I, I hope we can do it for that. And, and then the balance of the 200 is for either a, an agency, we have been working with a, an agency doing our communications and PR for several years now. So it's either for that and/or for that and a combination of a communications position that would be responsible for coordinating all communications through all the buildings and the district.
So it's two positions?
It's two positions, it is not one, right.
Got it, got it. Okay, um, I noticed there's a hundred thousand dollar increase on equipment.
Is, is that in the same area you're speaking of?
It's elsewhere, I'm sorry, my notes are.
He's referring to, um.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, you know what, I, I'm going to leave that for you, I, I'd rather you talk to that one. I noticed there's an increase for Director of Facilities Three, when we haven't hired anybody, so I'm trying to understand, how do we estimate an increase for that salary when we haven't hired anybody? And, um, yeah, I just would like to understand how we can estimate that increase when no one's even, I don't even know who's even been.
Nor do we. But we, in order to attract people to fill that position, we do need to be aware of what the market is for that position. And so that was anticipating, being in the, in the marketplace to find people. Uh, we have sent out perhaps 40 to 50 emails and phone calls for a list of over 130 people who are eligible to be hired. And for the most part, nobody's interested. And our posting did say between 130 and 150,000 dollars for that position, and so I'm, I'm planning on that. We have in the past been able to allocate a small portion of that position to transportation because the facilities director was involved in transportation. And when it's in transportation, we were able to get state aid on, on the portion of the salary that's involved with transportation. We'll see where that all filters down when we choose somebody to hire.
So, I'm jumping over to a statement you made earlier about the additional security of STEAM. And I'm going to ask this question, because I, I'm at STEAM. There's nobody that's outside able to cover the parking spaces that I've ever seen. And every day I walk in that building, there's the same two folks basically sitting there.
So, we directed, Mr. Rosario, my understanding was that there was someone there every single day to control the parking spaces near the, just at the top of the ramp where certain people park in the morning. My understanding is that person is there every day, if that's not so, I'll have to look into it.
Could we please, and, and then I also want to say that regarding how, I know we have people who are, and tell me if I'm wrong, we have per diem security, and then we have full-time. We have per diem security and then we have full-time security. And our, I wanna understand, how many of those per diem or part-times are vying to become full-time and being stepped and looked over? I wanna understand who's, who's actually governing that. And, and I understand Rosario was the person, but I wanna understand who's holding him accountable for why people who want to be full-time are being skipped over, if that's happening. I wanna have, I wanna understanding of that.
I, I can't speak to-
Or, hold on, I'm sorry. Or people that have applied for, um, promotions, which are due for promotions, and I just ignored.
Can we use that as another time? Cause we're talking budget now.
But it's part of the budget because if somebody applies for a promotion, that means that their salary is gonna go up.
There's sufficient monies in the budget for security.
Okay.
And I, I would prefer to come back and, and, and speak better to this.
Okay.
They have money in the budget for certain positions now. That's a H R question you guys are asking.
Okey-dokey.
That's what we'll do.
We have a lot of positions. I don't know. Let Warren finish.
Um, you're right. Copy of lease maintenance. That's the entire district, correct?
Yes, sir. Our copiers, all of the leasing and maintenance of our copiers are through B O S E's. It used to be that we could just get the copiers through B O S E's, but now we get both through B O S E's and it's addable, uh, somewhere around sixty-three percent at this point for that.
Can I ask, can I ask a question with that? Um, so with us leasing these copiers, is it part of the lease to update, for example, if a new machine is up?
The leases for five-year lease on the equipment that we get. At the end of five years, we either stay with B O S E's and get new equipment, which we did a few years ago. All of it went and all of it came in new. And the prices pretty much do not change, but we still get the state aid because all the maintenance and the leasing of the equipment is through B O S E's. But no, they do not upgrade during the five-year period.
Wow, okay. Um, can you, uh, can you define what is the superintendent's budget that goes beyond his salary? It's in, it's one of the line items in here?
Sure. Are you asking me to speak to what the superintendent's contract is?
No, no, no. Can you speak to what his addition, what his budget is? There's a-
It's a siphon.
Yeah.
The additional lines.
Yeah, the additional lines of the budget that go beyond his salary. I just wanna understand it, cause if I'm not mistaken-
Maybe I'll put that up. Can we put this up for people to see?
It's on page five?
Yep.
Line one twenty-two.
Four through one twenty-six.
I don't know, I don't know what this is.
Sorry, it starts on page four at one twenty-two. I'm sorry, Marcy.
Okay, I'm, I'm there now.
Yep.
So there are three people, um, in the clerical salaries that are part of the superintendent's team. That's his executive assistant and the person who is the first person, I, I'm not gonna talk about names here. First person who you see when you come in, and there's one person who works, um, in another office who, uh, does work for the superintendent.
Another office?
Yes. There's, well, there's really no room in the superintendent's office and there's somebody else assigned to the superintendent, uh, who is in, in nearby office.
There's a split clerical position, um, that's called a personnel associate, uh, that is effectively assigned to H R, um, but is just listed organizationally under the superintendent's office. This was done initially when, uh, we had in-house counsel, uh, and that position was fifty percent H R, I mean fifty percent, uh, cliff and fifty percent superintendent. Um, and now that is changed, it's eighty-five percent H R and fifteen percent superintendent. So job postings that are related to the superintendent's office comes through that personnel associate. Um, and confidential postings related to, um, positions that are non-affiliate would also go through that personnel associate.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanna speak to these, these small items like a per diem would be-
Small items, no. The thirty, the ten, the twenty, anything over, okay.
Okay, so the, the contract that services, the superintendent has a, a small grant from one of our legislators, and we anticipate that being used up, uh, at the end of this year. There's another grant, uh, which is used for, uh, superintendent's reading challenge and other, other things the superintendent deems, uh, necessary. Uh, under instructional other, that's various, uh, conferences, memberships, um, school, New York State School Boards Association Conference, office supplies are pretty much, uh, uh, self-explanatory, meeting supplies have to do with, uh, uh, required things for the various meetings that the superintendent hosts.
Um-
B O S E's membership.
You had your turn. Come on.
So that the various, so the superintendent, the superintendent could belong to various associations. The student assemblies and trips, uh, that, uh, the superintendent, uh, recommends and, and funds through his budget, special trips that the kids might take. And the last thing, the B O S E's, uh, there is no B O S E's through the superintendent's office anymore.
Okay, so last I checked, I thought, I, I'm seeing estimated actuals column, that's J. Estimated actual for instructional others, thirty grand. It includes N I S B A conference, which I thought didn't happen this past, this school year. Am I crazy? Did N I S B A conference happen this year? Was that virtual? It was virtual?
Yeah, everything's virtual.
So, so it costed the same amount as it would any other year, even though it was virtual?
Those are estimates for this year, trustee. We don't know what expenses were given.
I've never gone to the N I S B A conference. The only conference I attend is the A A S A membership and conference. Um, and the, I, I haven't even gone to the A S C D conference. Um, and of course, the Lower Hudson County, uh, Association, those meetings I do attend. And that's, oh, and the scholarship, the scholarship dinner that happens every year, I do attend.
So you might be better off looking at column H, which was the actual expenditures for last year. And I, I'm anticipate, we, we just don't know what will be spent in those areas by June thirtieth. Anything that's not, where we have anticipated expenditures, trickles down to be further fund balance. But I'm trying to be very conservative, uh, in what we anticipate being left over. So some of these things might look inflated, trustee, uh, from what we actually might spend, but I need to be very careful. I can't, I can't be, I can't be over what we have.
Like I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm gonna, you can skip office supplies. I'm just gonna go straight to meeting supplies. Meeting supplies, twenty thousand dollars is the proposal.
So nothing was spent.
Fried chicken.
Nothing was spent. That's not food. Nothing was spent for meeting supplies last year. It's budgeted twenty thousand. We just don't know what might come up in the next three months.
All right.
And so it's not necessarily what's going to be spent. It's just being careful.
All right. I said fried chicken, cause I like fried chicken. I wasn't-
Does that have bone?
No, no, I, bonus. All right. So thank you for breaking all of that down. Music repair has a decrease of two K. I went to, uh, Denzel Washington School for a fact after Ida happened, and there was over three thousand dollars worth of destruction to the, to the instru- instruments.
So music repairs typically is, is through the regular, uh, building budget, uh, rather than a, a special, a separate line item. Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't, but there's never been any repair that has not taken place that's necessary for any musical instrument or anything else.
It was a decrease of two grand. I was just trying to understand why we were decreasing. We don't have any bands in any school in our district now. That's my understanding. So, which is sad. Everyone should feel sad right now because we all came up. All of us in this room came up in this district when there was a band in every school. They had band day. All the schools got together. They marched down the street. They had banners, batons, matching outfits, and it was amazing. Now for us to put together a parade for our basketball team that just won, we have only one school to go to that seems to have, uh, that has something that we could go with, and that should be something we're, that's not to you, that's just in general. Um, I'm gonna, last question I'm gonna ask about, cause there's, I gotta leave something for somebody else. School supplies. I got, this is good because I see we have a budget what looks like a hundred and, I'm sorry.
You wanna tell me where you are?
Yeah, hang on one sec. I'm almost there.
What page?
Oh, shoot. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We're on page twenty-four. I'm sorry, twenty-three it starts, right? So I wanna understand, we have budgets for school supplies, right? But I've been in schools this year that in October, first of all, let me ask this question. Does this school supply budget include the school supplies for T As, school supplies for special education, and the general education teachers as well?
Everything for special education is under Special Education Code twenty-two fifty, and all the school supplies for general education are where you see them. And where things are not sufficient, uh, again, I'm estimating what we will spend, but where things are not sufficient, uh, uh, one of the administrators, senior administrator will make a decision as to whether we can further fund something, uh, if there's not sufficient funds and it's necessary to purchase.
Okay. So I'm gonna just say this because, and the reason why I'm asking that question is because I've been in several buildings this school year that number one, I, there, you have, we have special education teachers that are purchasing all their own supplies because they're hearing from either building leads or whoever was, their I T or whatever the hell, whatever. They're being told there's no money, there's no supplies for them, which is absolutely unacceptable.
It is, it is also not true. So there's money for, everybody for whatever's needed.
I'm gonna say, yes, I agree with that. I'm sure there's money for everybody that needs it, but are they getting it when they ask for it? Why did we have to ask the T As in October, who never needs supplies, please submit this so that you can get your supplies?
The T As need, needs would be through the classroom teacher to the building principal, who would then be requesting it.
Right.
That's the process that takes place. The T A would not be getting supplies themselves, would be through the classroom teacher.
Got it. Why would they be getting that communication and only able to, to, to put that in an October when we should be having those supplies in place by, I imagine, uh, mid-August?
You may know, we have no purchasing agent, and so I'm managing that myself right now. And I can tell you, there's a large volume of purchases. We review every purchase at this time of year, especially, uh, more carefully to make sure that it's something that's needed before the end of the year. But there, there is money for every teacher, every T A, and if there's something specific with regard to a building principal, we'd be more than happy to inform them or set them straight on that.
I just wanna make sure that we're realizing the amount of money that's budgeted for all of these school supplies. It should honestly be getting to those teachers, those buildings. There should be a direct, no T A or teacher should reach out to anybody in this building and ask for supplies and get the scarecrow routine. Now, scarecrow routine is basically scarecrows outside, he's pointing this way, that way, and he points wherever the wind blows. Shouldn't happen. I'm not accusing you of this.
We understand your point. Perhaps you could give us some, some guidance on the schools involved offline and we will send something out.
Absolutely. Well, I, yeah, I've sent the emails out. You guys know the emails. You know, you know, my email game is crazy. So, well, I, we talked about this previously a few months back. Uh, we're talking about la- you know, laptops for T As and things like that, but we won't go into it. But I just wanna make sure that we're clear that if we have these budgets, we're honestly using them for our teachers. They need these supplies. I, we shouldn't walk into a classroom, uh, and the teacher has gone to Ikea to purchase all of their storage furniture to put crayons and markers. And then to have teachers in two or three other different schools all say a song that sound the same, like, I emailed so-and-so and they never replied, or I went to so-and-so and they told me there's no budget.
We will, we'll send something out to the building principals, but I can assure you that nobody in senior administration has, has had any conversation like that with anybody, but we will make something out to all the principals tomorrow.
Um, I just have, piggybacking off of you. How are we holding the principals accountable that, okay, first of all, they order their own supplies, right? The principals? Or is it, we order for them?
They have a budget for it.
So they have a budget. So they order, they order their own thing? Or what is it? How, how does it work?
There, there's two different parts to that. The first part is the, the office of the principal has its own budget for materials and supplies.
Okay.
Then there's materials and supplies for the building itself, which could be under regular education, special education, psychologist, social works, any of those areas could have supplies. The building principal, uh, or the secretary in the building would have to request that, uh, to my office, and the purchase order would be made out of that.
So how, with the question still standing, like, how, how do we, are we holding principals accountable that this money is being used appropriately and that teachers, all teachers are getting supplies equally?
Everything that's requested is, is reviewed by my office before it's approved and turned into a purchase order. Uh, but we rely on the professionalism of the building principals to order what they need within their budgets. And so, uh, again, we'll send out a little clarification note tomorrow to the building principals.
I think it's even basic supplies because every year the teachers ask for, every year the teachers ask for, um, tissues and, and, and hand wipes and things like that. So, you know, I think that's every year the teachers ask for the stuff like.
Well, those things are provided through two sources, one through facilities and one directly through the building principal requesting things, depending upon what they are.
See, but I'm a parent and I'm telling you, every year, every year, the teachers have requested, and I go to Costco and I buy the big things and I give it to the teachers. I think the only, the only year they, they, their request was this year because of the pandemic. Okay?
No, they requested it this year.
But, uh, uh, well, like, I, but I still bought it, like, and it is, and I, and, and, and as a parent, I'm upset. And as a teacher, I'm three times as upset because my fellow teachers are suffering out there right now in my burning. And it's like somehow, somewhere, somebody's telling them exactly what trustee Mitchell just said, that there's no money for them to get this. There's no money for them to get that. And for, I've been listening to the same song for twenty-five years, trust me, and I spent like four thousand, five thousand dollars a year in supplies. So I could only imagine, you know, what's happening here. So I just wanna know, what can we do as a board to make sure that the monies in the building, in, in the, the money in those buildings are being used appropriately and that teachers are getting those supplies? Because if it's here and we are voting for it and we put it in the budget, the teachers need to get that support. The teacher need to get that. Bottom line.
We, we, we really can't do anything as a board. It, it's the administration has to do it.
Okay. No, thank you for the clarification.
Are you done?
Uh, never, 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 never.
All right. So, so, um, I just had, uh, so I just, so I just wanted to say, we had a lot of positions last year that weren't filled, right? We had a lot-
Say it again, I'm sorry.
We had a lot of positions. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No problem, no problem. It's just something real quick.
I'm sorry. No, cause you jumped over him. Stop it. Okay.
I thought his name was Miller. I thought his name was Miller.
Thank, thank you, brother.
You just gotta go there. Warren and I have to-
Nah, just real quick. All right. Okay, um, my question is, during the year, we had a lot of problems and, at the high school with security and, you know, other parts of, of the city. And I see we, um, have a negative eight percent on the security side, and then I also see we are, are we hiring twenty-five full-time employees or what is that?
You mean for the high school?
Well, period in this, in the-
Remember, as people leave, new people come in typically at a lower salary than the people that leave. So our analysis for the salaries for next year include everything that we need. So if a percent, something is a little bit lower, it could be higher in another school, it could be higher in a different place. Uh, but we are confident that our needs are met with what's in this budget for security staff.
Now, now, to my knowledge, as far as the crossing guards and the S R Os, that's taken care of by the city and not that?
The, the city has, uh, there's an issue, I guess, with the crossing guards right now that you may be aware of. The crossing guards are paid for by the city. Uh, but we have an issue with regard to one or two schools right now, which, uh, Dr. Hamilton, uh, is, is involved in trying to resolve with the city. Uh, the S R Os, um, we are about to enter an agreement with the city to, uh, uh, help with the cost of an S R O, or several S R Os.
And do we build that into this budget?
No.
We should?
Yep.
Right? I think so. Okay.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
We didn't budget for the S R Os.
No, we didn't.
Well, we need to do that.
Right?
Right, but we should have a swag in there. We should know that.
I think that, yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm done.
No, no, I, because we just, we, we do need to budget for the, um, the S R Os. We probably need to budget for the, um,
Crossing guards as well.
Crossing guards.
Absolutely.
But aren't crossing guards, well, whatever.
Well, wait, now, hold on. Now, you're gonna talk, don't talk about crossing guards because I have seventy-four letters from students at Mandela School that explained all their reasoning why they know that they need a crossing guard. But for some reason, there was wording that came from outside the school district that something about we don't get crossing guards or something. I can't understand it, but, um, I noted, Ken Silver, you were following up on that. Do you, if you can't share anything at this moment, I understand.
I think I can share that. The, the, um, the city has said that there is not currently funds, uh, for a crossing guard at Mandela. And that we would have to write to the city to request that. Uh, that was done by the building principal. Uh, that was done by the building principal and by Dr. Hamilton, uh, but that has to go through the city council to appropriate more funds. I would tell you that there is no school district in the state that pays for their crossing guards. Those are all pro, provided by the municipality, and so we're confident that we will get that done, it's just it should not wait. Uh, we do agree with you.
Well, in addition to that, the, the students at the STEAM Academy want a crossing guard over there as well.
Well, the, the city does, does not provide crossing guards for anything beyond elementary. Um, so, tha, that's not available currently under the, uh, the, what the city is doing.
Then I have a question, because I might have missed it. Do we have a line item for, if we know that already, that there's no budget, the city's not providing a crossing guard for anything beyond ca, uh, elementary school, then do we have a line item in the budget for the crossing guard for STEAM?
No, sir, there's been no request to actually have a crossing guard. I, I understand what you're saying, but there's been no request from the administration for us to, to provide that. There's been some discussion of it, uh, but in speaking to security people, they feel that a crossing guard is not necessary at the STEAM Academy. If the board feels differently, we'll figure out a way to put it in the budget.
Just so I'm understanding, we would need the building administrator to request that crossing guard for its, for us to move on it?
I, I, I can't, I didn't mean to say that, if I did, that's not what I meant. The building administrator may have requested that, but I, I, I don't specifically know that. All right, well, that's, yeah.
I, I, I think maybe the, the budget committee could take a look at security, since there seem to be a lot of questions around that, and just make sure that what we've allocated takes into consideration, at least the SROs, and then if, certainly if our students are feeling unsafe crossing at, uh, at the STEAM, I mean, it's a busy street, if they're feeling unsafe crossing there, then we have to accommodate them.
Maybe security should be out there and assist, instead of buying it. Okay. So I just had a couple of questions. I don't, I don't wanna belabor this, because I know, um, trustee Miller and trustee Mitchell addressed some of the questions I had. Did I get that right? Okay. So, um, there was a question that Mitchell was getting ready to ask about, um, the equipment for their two pickup trucks, that was on page nine.
Yes, so, we have been renting trucks, and in fact, that question came up at a board meeting recently, why we're spending so much to rent trucks. And we, each year, we put something in the budget to purchase trucks, and each year it gets knocked out. So this year, it's in there again, and we're hoping to purchase, uh, two trucks with plows, two large pickup trucks with plows, uh, instead of renting, and that will eliminate two rental trucks next year.
We, I thought we bought a, didn't we buy an SUV? Didn't we buy some?
Not recently.
So we, so you're saying that we're gonna, you're looking to buy...
This year, we are, we are planning to buy two trucks through the state contract, that's what's in the budget now, we're hoping you will leave it there.
Okay. And then there was some, hoping that we leave it there?
You should know that some of those, some of those trucks that we now have are 30 years old.
Okay. They still run, right? Oh, they'll run, yes, sir, you know.
Lot of stuff runs when it's old.
Flintstone it, you know? Um, so, I, I, I just wanted to go over, uh, some things that you said, because I know there was some grants that were, we didn't use all the money, and I, I think those are the ones that BC was talking about. So we still have to, um, there, I know there was some money allocated for special ed, for certain trips and programs that we never used because we couldn't find the teachers. So we still have that money, right?
So that money gets rolled, rolled over, as Dr. BC said.
Right. And, um, so, I know we had the bond, and you said that we get state aid back from the bond, so have we started getting state aid back from the, from the bond that we did?
We, each, we don't get state aid until the project is completed and the final cost report, which means what we spent altogether is submitted to the state and accepted. All of our projects are now state aided, and next year, we anticipate, uh, I think a $2 million increase in our aid for the next few years.
So the $1.8 million bond wasn't completed?
The $108 million bond, uh, all the projects have been completed and are being aided now.
Okay, so we're getting state aid back?
Yes.
Okay, that's what...
And, and in the case of new construction, it's over 20 years, in the case of all renovations, it's over 15 years.
So we have quite a lot of positions that weren't filled, right? So we shouldn't be, I mean, I don't know if they're even gonna get filled at this point, you know, I mean, there was a lot of...
So we're anticipating, in all of the salary codes where there are openings, we have anticipated what we are going to spend this year without filling most of those positions, but remember that those positions have to be fully funded in next year's budget. So just because we don't spend it this year, doesn't mean we don't need it next year. Uh, there are lots of places in there where it'll be underspent, that again, trickles down to be fund balance in the end, but we still have to fully fund it next year, including the cost of social security, retirement, and, uh, and health insurance for all those positions that were unfilled. There may be monies, we anticipate there be monies left over in a number of the benefits from this year, but we still need to fully fund it for next year.
The treasurer position has been gone for like, maybe two years?
The treasurer's position has been open since July, last July 1st, yes.
All right.
We have filled, we have gotten that work done through, uh, BOSIS has assisted us, and again, we get 63.7% state aid on the expenses through BOSIS.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I had.
I, I had a few questions.
Okay.
Not as a budget chair, but as like a trustee. Um, so can you go through really quickly what organizations we have contracts, like when the contracts are up for all the organizations that we negotiate with?
What do you mean organizations?
Well, we have to negotiate with the teachers' union, like, I just wanna get an idea of what, how, what year we're negotiating out to.
Sure, the teacher's contract expires this year.
So that's, this year, like?
June.
This, this June.
Thank you.
Right, so we will be, so, um, the lunch monitors contract was, uh, was just renewed for, I'm not sure how many years, but for a few years, so that's off the table. The CSEA contract expired several years ago, uh, and we, the new budget, everything is provided for that's necessary. Uh, we have not yet met with the CSEA, we are waiting for the initial proposal from the CSEA union to sit down to begin our negotiations, but we know we have an obligation that goes back several years, where there's been no increases other than the increases because of people getting steps, but even that will need to be reworked, uh, going forward.
So we haven't, we haven't negotiated a contract with CSEA in, since how long?
I think, uh, 17, 18, or 18, 19 was the last year.
Wait, 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 wait. Why, but why is that?
I think, I think the contract expired two years ago.
But why, why is that, though?
Well, there was a lot of turnover in the union leadership, at some point, there was no leadership at all. Uh, we did attempt to negotiate with the people above our local people, and that didn't work out, and now there, we're supposed to be getting a proposal from, well, we were supposed to get one last month, uh, to begin negotiations. That's where we are with the CSEA. We, we recognize this obligation, and we are prepared for however it goes.
Okay.
Do we have enough money, money in the budget to...
We're prepared.
Okay, okay.
The, uh, the next, uh, unit is the, um, the administrators group, uh, we are, we are close to an agreement, which will go out to, um, I think, I think it goes to 23, 24. It covers next year, but it also goes back a few years, and we are prepared for the, whatever that brings as well. Did I miss a unit? I don't think so.
I think that's it.
I think that's it.
You mentioned lunch monitors.
Um, then, there are a number of huge swings on teacher salaries.
So, uh, I did make a note, uh, in the beginning, right after the K3, uh, salaries, all the way on the right-hand side, perhaps in green, saying that we've reworked the way we've done this. For instance, if you have a phys ed teacher in a K8 building, where do you put that person? Do you split it up, part K3, part 4, 6, part 7, 8? That's difficult to do, to divide those salaries. So we made the decision, and it's very clear in there, that all of those specials are now in, now included in the 4, 6 budgets. So the phys ed teacher, the reading teacher, all the specials are in, not things for 7th and 8th grade, but all the things that apply for all the grades in the building are in one place, and so that's why there looks like some swings. Uh, but the swings are only because we reorganized the way to do it, so that everything is in one place. So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have to say to you, well, at Pennington, the reading teacher is in K3, but in Holmes, it's in a different area. And that was very carefully constructed, uh, this year, very carefully.
Cause like Benjamin Turner has a $1.3 million decrease. That's all...
Everything is because of reorganization, and we worked with, um, uh, Dr. Smith's office, with HR, Office of School Improvement, we were all a part of, of the, of the staffing, and the, we decided that the best way to do this was to have all the specials in one place.
Okay, two more questions. Um, one, just to be clear, um, charter schools, when we're looking at the 9.7 million, 1.7 of that is allocated for the new charter school, right?
Yes, that's correct, but also, we have to, uh, under special ed, there's also charter schools for those children who go to the charter schools that require special services. That's, um, a few hundred thousand dollars, but it is a piece of what we have. So if a kid goes there and has been classified, we have to provide those services to the charter school.
It's like he walked right into my trap. So the special education, speaking of that, um, we're, so we have, uh, a few years running, so for 2021, tw, I'm sorry, 2021...
So what which are you in?
I'm looking at the three-parter that we have, just because it makes it a little simpler to look at, when you're looking at totals. Um, special education was 40 thou, 40 million, uh, last year it went down to 38. Um, I don't know if that was budget or actual spending for the 38, um, but this year it's only up to 30, okay, so this year it's up to 39, so my concern is, is this 39 million making up for the missed...
The, the missed things are not under the special ed budget for the most part, they're under psychological services, uh, the social workers, guidance, and psychologists are where those increases are, and there's a note about that there being additional staffing in those areas where you get to that, that portion of the budget. So it's not the special ed teachers, it's the special ed services that are being increased, but...
So what, what, what budget item is that?
Uh, you could look at, uh, 28, 20, perhaps, let me just think.
22, 80?
No, that's, that's IT.
Occupational education?
That's definitely one.
Okay.
22, 80 is IT?
No, no, uh, whatever, not what I'm looking for.
Line, um, 1197 would be an example. Under social work services, all staff allocated to individual buildings in 22, 23 for accounting purposes includes two additional FTE allocated to buildings below and added in March of 22. So we added, uh, several staff members to these buildings, and they were accounted, but they need to be accounted for completely for next year.
Yeah, but how many staff members could, I mean, again, from what I understand, we're pretty far behind, how many staff members can cover s...
Remember, these are not...
$100,000, what could that be, six people?
These are not, these are not classes so much as services that are be, being provided.
No, I understand, but a person can only be in one place at a time, so if I'm providing a service and I can only be in a single place at a single time, so my full-time salary would still be something.
So my understanding and, and the way we've operated is that we are providing additional services for the kids who have missed services during the COVID time, and we are, we are confident that based on what we did with Dr. Smith's office, uh, and HR, that we, we have the budget to provide for those services for these kids.
I have one, I have, I have a question, Dr. Ken, Mr. Silver. Um, so, as far as, um, facilities, the facilities department, uh, I believe we, we had some painter positions open, maintenance?
Right now, there are, there are, there are eight people under maintenance that exist now.
Right.
There are three openings, one for a, a mason, and one for a plumber, I believe, and one for a mechan, just a general mechanic. Uh, those, those positions are open, uh, and they have not, and one of them has not been filled in some time, the mason position, um...
He just left last year, Mr. Tarrant, right?
Right, so that was, that was not filled, uh, this year, and I think somebody else just left creating another opening. Um, yeah, I, I think that's what it is. We just reviewed that today with the facilities department staff, uh, to go over exactly what's there, uh, and, and we went over the grounds openings and the custodial openings where there are substantial cleaner and custodial openings, and, uh, and also the maintenance staff, which includes the plumbers. So there are, there are, excuse me, includes the painters, and there are three painters currently.
Supposed to be at least two painters.
There are three painters currently on staff.
On staff, because there's one on staff.
There, there are three painters now.
When did that happen?
Uh, I, I don't know how to answer that, there, there, there are three painter positions.
I thought it was only one.
Now, there's three positions, there's only one painter.
There, there, okay, I, I'm happy to get those names, I don't have them, but I do have them in my office.
I'm just saying the positions, because I understand that those positions, they were taken down.
So there are three paint, there are three painters now. I'm, I'm happy to provide you with those names, uh, offline.
Okay, so, so we have three painters, maintenance, plumber, and a mechanic, uh, ma, uh...
Mason, masonry person.
Open position?
Yes, there are three open positions in that department.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm gonna beat a dead horse again, I apologize, I, I can't let this go.
So, so that doesn't add up to eight, so...
There's eight, there's eight currently.
Eight current positions available, open, or...
There are currently eight people working in that department. We discovered today that a couple of people were in the wrong place, and they're being moved, and those FTEs will be moved with them.
Okay.
So we discovered, uh, we discovered people were, were just coded wrong, as we review things and, and hear the names of people, uh, we find that sometimes somebody moves from one thing to another, or is promoted, and they're not necessarily moved in the, in the payroll, and therefore, the budget, uh, doesn't exactly match sometimes.
Okay.
But that covers, that does cover everybody who's here, and I'm happy to provide you with the detail of that.
Thank you, Mr. Silver.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, I'm going back to beat my dead horse really quickly.
And then I have one more question.
So, when I'm looking at guidance services, right, unless I'm mistaken, it says we're $15,000 less than we were last year. Then I look at psychological services, we're $440,000 more, which again, what could it, uh, how many people could it be? And then, 240...
If you look at psychological services, if you look at, uh...
Can you share pages, please?
Line 1176, line 1176, four new psychologists for 22, 23, four additional staff were added in March for 22 and allocated to various buildings.
Yes, I, I just wanna be really clear that we're, the administration is saying, by this being the request, that we believe that this is enough to ensure that our kids are getting the support that they need and whatever.
Uh, somebody else could speak to it if they wish to, but I would say that our, our planning, all of our budget defense rounds, everything with the superintendent administration, was that this will provide the services needed for the kids who are miss, who are missing services during COVID.
See, what, what concerns me when we talk about, um, budget defense rounds or anything like that, right, is, yes, budget defense rounds are important, and I understand that building leaders would know what's best for their building, but at the same time, essentially the buck still stops here. So, I'm, I'm not trying to question that people don't know what they're doing, but I just wanna make sure that we're covering our bases, that the kids are gonna get what they need, because th, th, it's, like, to, to hear the reactions today of the kids that were in the, taking the tests and, and the kids who, the, it, it was, it was sad, it was really kind of horrifying, um, and I understand why they're feeling the way they're feeling, and I understand why they're reacting the way they're reacting. So we just need to make sure, again, that we just didn't, you know, I, I just want somebody to tell me that this is enough people, that these kids are gonna get the help they so desperately need.
So, let, let me speak to that, and perhaps Dr. Smith would like to add to what I'm gonna say, that the budget defense rounds include all of the senior administration, we are all there, involved with the building principal. We are all there, involved with the building principal. So Dr. B.C.'s there, Dr. Smith, Dr. Gorman, Dr. Hamilton, myself, and Ms. Tigs is, is with us as well. And we, we talk about the staffing, we talk about the needs of the building, we talk about whether we need increased services. And Dr. Smith's office is always involved in, in what services we're missing or need to be provided. Somebody else like to comment?
Yes. I would, I would just like to add to what Mr. Silver said, Trustee Munoz Patterson, is that we have a lot of counseling, mental health services, with social workers and psychologists coming from grants and from the ARP funding, which is not in here, because this is just a budget. But we kind of balance it off, where we have some general ed, kids that have been taken care of from the general budget, but also, we have the ARP funds, Title I services, you know, to ensure that the kids get these services. And as next board meeting, you will hear from the mental health director that we hired for the district, she's going to present to us how she is going to work with families and, and students on how to ease the mental health pressures that we are having here.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you, B.C.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry. Just go ahead, because shoot.
Okay, I have, I have just a global question, and that is that we're supposed to be voting on the budget next Tuesday, April 5th, at our board meeting. Is the Budget Committee recommending zero tax increase? What is the Budget Committee recommending?
The Budget Committee is not recommending a zero.
Okay. So, I mean-
I'll, I'll put something together and send it to the whole board, but I think that what the Budget Committee was looking for was something between, something below one, but definitely some, some increase.
Okay. So this is something that we'll be getting some information on? Because I, I know there are certain members of the board who aren't even here this evening who were interested.
So let me-
Something happened on my end of the table, only kidding. People have, there's stuff going on. But I just, I just would like to be able to consider the options of a fractional tax increase, because I, if fiduciary, as a fiduciary, I think it's the right thing to do. And I think we've identified some issues here tonight that specifically go to our alignment as a board based on the priorities we've given to the, we created for the superintendent, that I think we may not have fully addressed here. And I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to explore that.
Correct. So we're gonna, the Budget Committee's gonna get together again, given, I took note of the questions and the concerns and the issues that people rose, you know, in terms of, in particular, the security and the other things, just to ensure that we have sufficient, whatever, you know, funds and whatnot. And we also were talking about, again, we did want to talk about, and if, we have five, right? Yeah, we're okay. So we still have five here. So we talked about potentially thinking about that move to Mount ford High School, and if that makes sense. And again, it's just an idea, because the reality of the situation is, if you look at some of the schools surrounding our district, they have large buildings. They have, you know, elementary schools where they have 1,000 students. And that, that size building creates a cost savings, where we have some buildings that have, you know, a dramatic, dramatically different, you know, number of students. We have some rooms that have, and not even special education, but regular rooms that have 13 teach, students in a class, which isn't really, again, it's an issue because if you have 26 kids, you can't put them all in one class. You might get that, but, I don't know, maybe there's a way we can get a little smarter about how we're breaking, I don't know, whatever. But yes, so the Budget Committee's gonna get together, and we're gonna scream at each other again for another hour and a half, and we'll figure something out.
Well, I hope you're not screaming, but I, my, and I appreciate all the hard work that was put into this, I really do, on behalf of Mr. Silver, all the principals, everyone who contributed to the defense rounds and who's advocating for the children. I think it's fantastic. I appreciate the work that's being done. The fact of the matter is, is that based, because of our neighborhood school model, we have an exceptionally high overhead. Our overhead is not driven by people being paid exorbitant salaries. It's driven by all the buildings we have. And every building has a principal, and an AP, and has electricity and gas. And so, so basically, this model is extremely expensive. And I think anything we could evaluate, any opportunities that you guys come up with for us to evaluate to reduce our overhead costs, especially as more and more charter schools pop up, is really welcome. Thank you.
I have, I remember my question. This is for custodials. So, and that, I think I told you that I wanted to ask you a question about the pool. And I know that we don't have custodial staff that are certified to do pool repairs and stuff like that. Is this, is this part of the budget? Are we considering to have a line for that in the budget? Because I know that the pool has not, ever since, like, I know there's certain things that have happened in the pool, and we just say, and I'm not, you know, that, and we don't have people to go and repair it, and we don't have people to go and, and deal with the emergencies. So can we please consider and discuss to putting in the budget a custodial staff that is certified to address the pool situation, and to address the pool, period?
I could go under professional development, right? Wouldn't that be-
No, it needs to be a certification.
No, I know, but certification could be under professional development, couldn't it?
Just because we, we already put so much money, you know, to renovate this pool.
Yes.
And we need to keep it. We need to figure out a way how to maintain it, how to make sure that we, our kids get the best of, you know, they could get in that sense. So can we just consider putting that in the budget? And I'm done.
Are you sure?
Uh, let's see.
All right. So is, does anyone else have any other questions? No?
My question is just, when are we gonna get the recommendation? Sorry to put pressure on you, Chair, Chair Munoz Patterson.
Do you want it tonight, or can I take a day, can I take tonight off for the rest of the meeting? Can I tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just, so we have a couple of days to think about it before the-
Yeah, no, I'm gonna-
For, for what kind of tax increase the Budget Committee's recommending?
I'm sorry, just so I'm clear.
So I understand there was a, there's a pool service company that does the repairs for us, for the pool.
So I could speak to that. We have had difficulty finding a company that does the repairs. But we're not going to find a custodial type of person who's going to do repairs. This is pretty sophisticated, multimillion-dollar equipment. And we, this, the, we came across some, all of the state contracts are upstate, and there's nobody who's interested in working down here who can come through a state contract. So we are working on procuring somebody who is local to do the maintenance on the pool. But it's really sophisticated equipment, if you haven't seen it. It's multimillion dollars equipment.
Like, I have no idea. The only thing I know how to do in a pool is swim.
But if you go to the floor below, it's, it's quite an experience to go down.
But I know that there is certain, there's a certain level of certification that a custodial could, custodial staff could have to deal with the most, you know, like, immediate issues. I know that there are other stuff that they need, like, you know, we need, like, top-of-the-line. But there's, like, more immediate issues that our coaches shouldn't be dealing with, because that's not their job. And if something happens, once again, we could get sued.
There is custodial staff assigned to the, to the pool.
Custodial staff is assigned to the pool.
And I know one of them is definitely certified. They went through certification to be able to change.
I mean, as far as shuddering it-
Okay, yeah, let's not, let's like, let's not talk about Bruno then. Let's just-
All right. So is that any other questions? Are there any other questions? Because we have other things to do.
Sorry. Just really quick regarding the budget, the new, the new budget presentation. It's going to be one is zero with the idea of shuttering this building, and the other will be at the increase that we have, we discussed last year that was approved by the people in the last budget from last year, or close to it?
If you were talking about closing a building and moving, you'd be talking about at least a year to do that. A 0% increase in taxes would have no bearing on the coming year, except that there would be expenses if we tried to renovate.
I just want to, I really feel like my mom is here right now, because I feel like we said this like, six times, and you picked the sixth time to be like, hey, by the way, that can't happen anytime soon, right? He put the kibosh on it 20 minutes into it.
Be clear on that. What we're expecting next, for that, for it to be presented to us, I just wanted to be-
So, well, so I'm gonna meet with the Budget Committee. I'm gonna mention all the items that were mentioned here. We'll look at, back at, because one of the things we do often, I feel like, is drive poor Mr. Silver nuts with our deep dives into the budget and where we can, you know, use Band-Aids and where we can get away with things. And then I will email the board, I don't know, is today Wednesday? Friday, I guess? I will try for Friday. How about that? That will be my goal, Friday.
So what you're saying is that you're gonna give us a 0.75 or something?
I'm gonna talk to the rest of the committee again.
Action of a tax increase, or, or no tax increase?
I, I'm gonna talk to the committee again, and we'll see what we come up with, because we kind of, we, we got into this whole, where, where we spend money in, in the facilities and the plants and everything. And I don't, not sure we ever really got to a number, although there was conversation about a number. I also want to give everyone a heads-up. Mr. Silver, can I steal your thunder for a really quick second about the chiller at Trapphegan?
Is it a bad thing?
So just everybody, yes. Ha ha. You thought I was gonna get off topic.
Let's stay on the same road.
I am firmly on topic, for once. But the, just to, again, for expectations, and kind of just to think things through and, and realize, if, you know, if we do need to think maybe 0% this year because we want to go for a bond, the chiller at Trapphegan is going to cost for the summer months, it's gonna be $160,000 for a Band-Aid repair, which is only gonna last six months.
The air conditioner.
Correct. The air conditioner in Trapp. And I would remind everybody that there are interior rooms that don't have windows. So it's really not, there's no airflow in that building. It was apparently designed by the same people who did Lincoln with no walls. And then they, and then to fully repair it, we're looking at $5.7 million. So again, just while we're looking at facilities, and we're talking about the cost of facilities and the cost of everything, we really need to figure out a long-term solution to our situation, not just a temporary, hey, we're gonna, you know, again, put a Band-Aid on it for five months and hope we can get to the winter. It's not, you know, it's not a resolution. So just-
Was that on the BCS report?
Yeah, it's a level three, though.
Yes, level three.
So it's not even part of the 20-
Summer schools, kind of.
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's something that facilities should look-
And, and that's not even addressing. So that's not, that 5.7 is not even in the 30 million that we've been talking about for level ones and twos.
Okay. So is that it for the budget?
I'm finished.
Okay. So is a motion to go into exec?
Motion.
Motion, second.
Calm down.
Can I please have a motion in a second to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing legal advice and the employment history of a particular person or persons?
Motion.
I want to go home. Is that a vote?
All in favor?
If I-
Aye.
Fine. Aye.
I don't think we have any action to take tonight.
No, no action items.
So, yeah, so we're gonna-
There's no action tonight, people.
There's no action. There's no other action after exec. So everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.